Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers, and there is also an automatic external defibrillator available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public who stands one nation in the God and in the visible, the liberty and the justice for all.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Health Center Board of Trustees, and I'll turn that over to Commissioner Duda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is our regular monthly, now monthly, updates on where we're at with the various HMA recommendations. This shouldn't take too long. Who wants to go first? Jim, why don't you share with us, if you would, where we're at?
Don't you have some?
Oh, Burl. Go ahead. Would you please call the roll, Burl? Here.
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 Thank you. We turn now to our Director, Jim Tourville. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, trustees. Jim Tourville of the Ministry of the Douglas County Health Center. This morning, DeeDee passed out a report to you, just kind of some highlights of where we are with the HMA recommendations, and so let's go through that, and we'll answer any questions that you might have. This is as of the 17th, and we are, the short-term rehab remodeling, all the demolition has been done. The next thing to do is to start installing the mechanical and electrical work, and the project is on schedule, and that is the end of February. So it's moving along very, very well. Jeff McGill's riding herd on that and make sure that everything is done right and is on schedule. Also, we're continuing to work on the referral base for the short-term rehab referrals, and Chandra is here, and she'll be very glad to update you on how that is going. Last week was a very busy week with referrals, and she's got great news to share with you, so we'll can certainly call upon her if you'd like. Admission packets, we are in the process of updating those, just trying to get them processed, and also to try to make the admission process smoothly, flow smoothly. We're working on policies and procedures right now for short-term rehab, and right now, the residents who might be placed in alternate placements in the other, in the community are being reviewed. We've identified 20 of them. Of that 20, there's three of them that the doctors and the guardians have all said that, yes, they would be appropriate to move to the community. There's one gentleman that we have not been able to find a place that would accept him yet, but we're continuing to work on that. So, and just continue to work on that. It's a slow process, but we have to make sure the guardian and the physician are on board with it as well. So, let's see here, what else do I have? And then, under electronic health record, we're just starting that process. We have found out that there are some very, very strong systems out there. Whether they really are applicable to long-term care, we are finding that out. We've seen some very good acute care systems, and we'll be having some conference calls in January to talk with the companies and get further information from them, and have a demo, onsite demo. We have met with the first three that were selected initially, and, but now we're going to actually see actual demos, and that's going to be important. So, that is flowing well. We are working with the Health Department, and also with primary health care, and also with CMHC, and Diane Wallace on that. So, we're hoping to find a system that will meet everyone's needs. I'm not real optimistic, but that's just, you know, because if the meds, if Allegiant could find a system that would be applicable both to long-term care and to acute care, they would have it, and they don't have it. They have a system that is not applicable to long-term care. So, hopefully, there's something that we can find out there, and that's what we will be looking for. Then also, under privatization, as directed by you, we are looking at that, and we will have a report for you in January. We're just looking to see if possibly there are some things that we can privatize, looking at the, if there's any operational analysis or private, operational efficiencies, and we're looking at that presently. We'll have, as I said, have a report for you in January of next year. So, any questions anyone has? I'd be very glad to address them.
Trustee Boyle.
Yes, thank you. I'm, my ears always perk up when you talk privatization. I'd like plenty of warning on that, and I would like you to frankly, if you are thinking of privatizing, go from top to bottom. I mean, there are things that, all the way at the top, that can be privatized as well. So, I hope we're not just looking at the people who wash the dishes.
I believe what we're looking at is what the HMA recommendations, we're just following through with the various things they suggested we could consider.
Okay. Well, I hope it, if it doesn't include my recollection, I don't have the recollection of what it included, but I hope it goes all the way to the top. I think that's necessary, in fairness, too, and I think there's some savings that could be, could be found. So, take a look and let us know, the whole picture, not just the part, not just part of it. Okay?
Okay.
Trustee Borgeson.
And I think we've already done that from the top, when we talked about privatizing the management facility that got us to where we are today. And I think this is the extension of those services that needed just to be looked at and brought back to the board in terms of that discussion, so.
And we'll have some that are not on the HMA recommendations as well, so it's just, you know, we're.
Yeah. Okay, good.
Thank you. Any other comments for Mr. Tourville?
And DeeDee is here to highlight you on the financial, if you want that now, or you want that later?
Well, Trustee Morgan, yesterday, we did try to have a trustee meeting at the Health Center. We did not have a quorum out there, and now cannot reschedule that meeting until next month because of publishing. I'm very sorry that we didn't have a quorum out there. But Trustee Morgan, who was there, asked that we have this update during the financial.
Okay, very good.
During the Finance Committee, a discussion of today's agenda. So, I would like to hold off on that until then.
And if you have any questions for Chandra, she is here as well, and she certainly can.
Chandra, if you have good news, you want to briefly give us some good news here?
No.
Always like good news, right?
You bet.
You're fine.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
I like your boots.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, yes. Early Christmas present.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, things are going well. We've implemented a referral tracker. Last week, we were so busy with referrals that we couldn't get them all reviewed. Changing the face of the type of patients and services that we will take, getting, expressing that out to discharge planners is right now the focus. We project that the long-term care will stay filled, and the skilled will fill that. So, I think we're on track for 22 beds, hopefully. We're real close. We're conscious of that number, so when we open the unit, that's what we have available.
Very good.
Any questions for me?
Any questions for Chandra?
Did we get done with the actual brochure, marketing brochure?
No, we've been so busy that we, it's done, it's just the final edits.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it.
No, and we'll get it to you when we're done for you guys to see. And we've drafted like a letter for when we approve or decline admissions to the discharge planners in Omaha. It helps keep us in the form, you know, front of their minds. So, we've been doing a lot. It's always busy, always.
I know we were handed kind of like the ideas of what we were going to do, but didn't know if it was ever, you know, the absolute brochure.
Yeah, it's done. We're, we'll have to, we're talking about some rebranding in the executive staff, that type of thing, and when we're closer, I'll let them bring those ideas to you guys, so.
Oh, great.
All right.
Thank you, Chandra.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
May I add one more thing?
Please.
Last Thursday, the VA was here, and they did a survey, our annual survey. I have not had an annual survey for several years, but they're supposed to have one. Very complimentary of the quality of care. They recommend, they're going to recommend to the VA that they renew our contract with them, and they're just very, very impressed with the quality of care that our residents are receiving, so.
Very good.
I just wanted to share that with you. And then, we will be having some dialogue with them regarding what types of ways we can collaborate with them, and also what the Medicare rate, or what the reimbursement will be for the services we provide. That's, we'll be discussing that as well.
Good. Thank you, Jim. Trustee Borgeson.
That's what I was going to ask. Have we had that discussion yet with them to, because there was a, that was kind of what was kind of holding us up, if I remember right, and so are they more willing to pay that, or are we still just not even there?
They're willing to pay us one of two, two ways of reimbursement. One is Medicare minus 15%, or one would be the full Medicare rate. And if they pay us the Medicare minus 15, then they will provide the expensive drugs to us, so we don't have to pay for those. If we pay, if we accept the Medicare, full Medicare, then we will have to cover those expensive drugs, and we've taken a look at that, and it's to our advantage to accept the full Medicare rate, and find generic drugs that are less expensive for the drugs that the residents need.
And what if that, what would the rate, Medicare rate plus be if we needed to be made whole by that contract?
DeeDee would have to answer. I'm not really certain.
That may be something we want to just take a look at, so we know what entering into it, what our shortfall could potentially be.
And we do that each month, so we have a good feel for that, based upon what it's been this year.
Okay. But I mean, just for this contract?
Sure.
Yeah.
And then also, I did receive an email from Dr. Catherine Eberle. She used to be at the Med Center, and she is the CEO now over at the, over at VA, and she's had some dialogue with powers to be within the VA system, and they're very open and very, very receptive, and they want to get back together and have some dialogue and discussion with us. So, it sounds like they may be willing to increase our reimbursement for, or at least maybe do some short-term rehab for them, things like that. So, and they had a good chance to see our short-term rehab last Thursday, so that was very positive. And they, there's one, one of the residents there that's doing very, very well, and doing the best he's ever done, and they were very impressed with the quality of care that he's receiving, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good report.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we will turn to the interim CMHC Director, Sherri Glassner. Good morning, Sherri.
Good morning, trustees.
Good morning.
Hi, Sherri.
We've been very busy in the day treatment program. To bring you up to date, the program coordinator position was posted, and we filled that position. We're very excited. That position was offered and accepted by Pam Barnes. She has been an employee of the Douglas County, of Douglas County for 20 years, specifically Community Mental Health Center for 13 years. We are excited to have her. She brings a wealth of knowledge to that program, and I think she's going to be able to jump right in and do a phenomenal job. She will begin to start marketing that program very soon, specifically reaching out to serve additional Medicaid individuals. We also filled the day treatment therapist position, and we are excited. Mandy Stanley will start effective Monday, the 23rd, right before Christmas, and she is going to bring a lot of knowledge to the program as well. She is provisionally licensed, both as a provisional therapist and provisional LADAC, so she can do, provide both mental health and chemical dependency services. She also has a special interest in cross-training into our inpatient unit and reaching out to do work within the corrections program. She kind of sees corrections services near and dear to her heart, so we're excited to have her aboard on the program as well. Our subcommittee that is looking into the day treatment program curriculum continues to meet, and we hope to have that curriculum finalized by February 3rd and be able to implement that as well. The Transportation Committee continues to meet as well. We have developed a transportation assessment that we are going to be utilizing with individuals coming into the program. We hope to launch that probably the first part of January, and we're going to ask facilities that are referring consumers to us to fill that out. It's a short form, so before the person is even in the program, we can begin to address their transportation needs and hopefully be proactive in being able to establish transportation services with them before they, before they come into the program. In addition to that, we are going to be training the staff in regard to the transportation that's available for them. Sometimes, when you don't utilize transportation assistance for a while, you can get a little rusty, and so we're going to, we're going to be just giving reminders to staff in regard to what type of services are available. I think that is it right now for the day treatment program. We're excited to, to launch all these new activities. Do you have any questions?
Trustee Borgeson.
I don't really have a question but a comment, that I am so pleased we're moving on the two-track curriculum process. I have a friend who just recently finished her hospitalization, but went into a day treatment program and called and really hit home about how that program actually hurt her more than it helped her, because she was in with such severe ill people that it caused her to kind of have another episode. And I told her, you know, that Douglas County was looking at that very issue, and she started crying and said that's the greatest thing that she's heard, and so it made me very proud that we were on that right track to really take a look at that and really focus more on the needs than just lumping them all into one program and say they're in a program. So, I want to congratulate you on that.
I appreciate that feedback. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
On the agenda is the opportunity for Citizens' Comments. If anybody wishes to comment on anything for the trustees, not on the agenda, this would be the opportunity. If not, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, Burl. Thank you all.
Thank you, Burl. Thank you.
We'll wait just a minute while we change places. I see you got some memo, Dana. We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 10, 2013. Item B, call for a meeting instead Tuesday, January 7, 2014, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
Question for A and B?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have one resolution. Item D, approving applications for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the County Treasurer.
Most approve.
Does that include adjournment?
Yes, it does.
Second. Any questions or comments? Please vote. We'll go to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Before we start the actual agenda, I'd like to take this time to congratulate two of our Commissioners that have received the 2013 NACO President's Award for their leadership, not only at the state level, county level, but at the national level as well, and that is Commissioner Boy, Mike Boyle, and Commissioner Chris Rogers. We'd like to congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
And it was Mike in his glory, receiving the award was quite the sight, so we're very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Item one, minutes and claims. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 10, 2013. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, December 17, 2013, and Item C, approval of resolution authorizing the clerk to make certain payments while the board is adjourned.
Motion for B, D, and C?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. The consent agenda is items A through H for a total of eight items.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on any of the items? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Hi, Melanie.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Melanie Williams-Smotherman. I'm currently a Millard resident. However, in the 30 years I've lived in Omaha, I've lived in South Omaha, North Omaha, Dundee, Benson, and out of Douglas County, and then I'm back. I founded the family advocacy movement in 2009, and the reason I did that was in response to personal experiences our family endured, and I realized that if these things could happen to a couple who is educated, professional, very involved in our community through voluntary participation in teaching chess in schools and at our church, it was happening worse to other people with fewer resources, and that was my motivation. I think that we all come to what we do based on our personal experiences, and I think that that helps inform us to be stronger advocates, which is what I do with my life every day. It's often not fun. I would say that anyone who gets up here to, you know, drive, park, pay, and develop comments to have for three minutes in front of a body of government officials is pretty courageous. And, you know, I've been doing this now for four years, but I understand how hard it is for a lot of the public to do this, which is why I feel compelled, through a responsibility, to speak for those who I see every day. First, I want to thank the Board for your work and focus in 2013. I especially want to thank Commissioner Borgeson for her leadership in chairing this board. As a member of the public, I appreciate how mindful she has been to the value of public input, and I think that that is one of the main themes that I want to address today. I understand that there's been some conversation about what is appropriate or not appropriate for the public to talk about at a county board meeting, whether or not it's relevant to county business. And I would just urge you to consider that public engagement, community engagement, is extremely important, especially at the local level where people live. I do believe that there are very few opportunities for the public to be engaged in decisions that are made for our lives and our children's lives, and this board provides a very critical opportunity for people at the local level to share experiences for three minutes on any topic. I think that this board should always welcome and encourage that sort of civic engagement, even if it doesn't seem immediately applicable, because I think that in every comment that a citizen would bring to this board, you will find relevance in some way, even if it's indirect. Those who know me understand that it isn't so much the side of an issue, you know, especially a partisan issue, that bother, that I guess affects me, it's whether or not you stand for liberty and justice and engage in that communication. With that said, I'd like to close by asking the Board to consider another comment that I heard made at one of the recent board meetings, and that is with regard to the truancy law and Senator Ashford's crown jewel, you know, and being concerned about whether or not he would be offended by our continued fight for families and kids and what is happening with, with kids and their education. And I would like to say that our families, our children, are our crown jewel. Our liberty is our crown jewel, and that needs to be first and foremost in all of your minds when you consider what is important and relevant. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board? Hi, Laura.
Hi. Laura McCormick, 7414 Valley. Sorry, just moved. In eight days, it will be Christmas, and there was a grandmother who took the time to come and talk about her own personal circumstance. I would like to commend you, Commissioner Boyle, for offering to go and chaperone, so that this young child, who desperately wants to see his grandmother on Christmas, when asked what he wanted for Christmas. He doesn't want toys or material things, he wants to go home. You offered to chaperone, so that this grandparent could see this young child. It is my understanding that despite the fact that this all occurred weeks ago, his background check has not come through.
They haven't checked my background yet. We're dead.
So, in all likelihood, this young boy will not get what he would like for Christmas. And I guess what I would like to speak to as it pertains to Melanie's comments, when I was here, I was talking about this child being truant. This child was truant while in the state's care. This child did not attend school for 24 days. I found that out by attending an open hearing. I requested a transcript of this hearing. I think it's important to bring this information to elected officials and others in the government, because these people who are taking our children are accountable to no one. These people who make these decisions are accountable to no one. I think it's important that you, on this body, understand the difficulty that the public is having in getting transcripts. I make multiple requests for transcripts, and the reason I want the transcripts are exactly as I discussed in this boy's case. It is an abomination that the state takes the child away from a parent, transports that child across county lines, and doesn't educate the child, and only then, when I, a bystander, get up and his grandmother gets up, does the child miraculously, the next day, appear in school. And thankfully, he is in school. That's a good thing. That's a positive thing. But that happens from open discourse. So, I would like you to know that. I don't know if you can help me get transcripts, but I would really appreciate it if this body could do things to make it so that these documents are more readily available. I was at the, the screening of Kids for Cash. I would highly recommend, if this body has not watched that documentary, I think it's very important. The text is also quite useful. My comment as a citizen is that there are some striking similarities between the environment in that county and Douglas County. When I talked to the woman who runs the Juvenile Law Center after the screening, as well as the filmmaker, we were discussing the difficulty that many of these citizens had bringing forth concerns, Commissioner Kraft, the difficulty that many of the citizens had expressing to elected officials these outrageous abuses that were occurring in this county. Many of the citizen parents who were in this county were actually banned from the courthouse. This is unacceptable in our county, in my county, four years after juvenile reform, millions of dollars. There are young boys who are out of their home, 30 placements, not going to school, truant in the state's care. We need, we need something to change, and we can't wait five years. We need it to happen now. Giovanni can't wait five years. He needs it to happen this Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
I only wanted to add a comment to-
I only wanted to add a comment to what Melanie said at the beginning, and I hope that we, probably me, that I haven't given the impression that we don't want to hear about these problems. Obviously, coming down here and talking to us, at least for some of the commissioners and most of us, it has had an effect. We respond to it. I think it's, the part that's bothersome is that it's not, it's something we have no jurisdiction over directly, and so it's frustrating because we can't make things change like we'd like to see them. But I would like to take a moment also to thank Commissioner Borgeson for her leadership in setting the tone on this, having been an open session where people can talk about what needs to be talked about. And my support of repealing the truancy law is unwavering. I'm still there, and I think that's what needs to happen. But I do want to say I encourage people to come down, but it is frustrating when we're sitting here, and we're just, we don't, we can't push a button or make a phone call and make somebody produce and do something, so, but keep it up. It keeps us informed, and it keeps the people in this community informed about what's going on, so thank you.
And I think you're right on point, Commissioner Boyle, that that's, I get frustrated too when things are broad and you can't move on them as quickly as you'd like, but I think by having, individuals having the courage to come and tell us that we're in a position to be able to help in those roundabout ways. I mean, I know just with Laura's request for things and kind of intervening to get those in a more expedient manner and less bureaucratic manner, those are the things that we can help with, but we have, and I'm glad they tell us that there's gaps or holes or, you know, bumps that they have to go through, and that's what we're here for. And so I do appreciate the courage you guys continue to have to come before us, so, and thank you for your comments, Commissioner Boyle. With that, we will move on to finance committees. Finance committee, Commissioner Morgan should be arriving, but Commissioner Duda, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The budget report is as presented, but in addition to that, as I say, we did get a good, some good news yesterday at the Board of Trustees meeting on the finances, and Trustee Morgan, he was wearing his trustee hat at that time, suggested that we get an update this morning down here as well. DeeDee, would you be so kind? I know that Commissioner Morgan had hoped to be here by now. Airport Authority must be having a longer meeting this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, DeeDee.
I passed out to you a financial review, and we'll just go through this real quick. Through September 30, our budget numbers, our revenue right now is over.
Can we put that on the screen by channel?
I've got that here. Close to the button. It's going, okay.
I know it's little, but.
Is that going to work?
There you go. There we go.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Got that? Okay. Our revenue over is over budget right now, approximately $366,000, and our expenses are under budget, $503,000, so that gives us a budget positive position of about $869,000. The reasons for this, on the revenue side, our long-term care occupancy continues to remain high, which is a very good thing, and our case mix of residents has increased. By that, what I mean is we are starting to be able to capture the resources that are necessary to take care of our patients, and we're capturing that, and we're able to convert that into our payment, and we're seeing the rewards of that by additional documentation and review of actually what care we are providing to our patients. And also, our therapy continues to assist us in some revenue gains, and I'll go through that in a little bit more detail in just a second. On the expense side, as we have talked about in the past, our pharmacy continues to utilize the formula, formularies that they had developed, so we're using more generic prescriptions, starting with those and seeing if those drugs are effective before we would go to the more expensive drugs. And also, we are being diligent in doing the patient assistance programs, getting people signed up for that. So, in that area, we are still trending on the positive side for the budget. On the therapy side, our revenue right now over cost from nine of 12 to 11 of 13 is $897,000 positive. That is exactly what we had hoped would happen with increasing the rehab and the therapy services that we provide. I've given you days from 9/12 through 8/13. We had 1,434 days at an average reimbursement of $477 per day, and for the last three months, 9/13 through 11/13, we have almost halved that number just for those three months. We've got 715 days. So with the addition of those rehab beds, we've really pulled that up. And also, our reimbursement then went up $30 a day. Right now, we're at about a cost of $300 a day for a patient, so we're above cost, and Medicaid would normally pay us about $189 a day.
Would you say that again?
Medicaid is about $189 a day for average payment right now, and our cost is about 300. So, we are making up, we are helping assist, yes, subsidize the Medicaid patients with some of those additional rehab patients we're doing. For the 12/13 financial audit, our fieldwork is complete. The clerk, we've turned over all the numbers for that. The reports will be consistent with last year. They did make one adjustment. I estimated about a $3.2 million intergovernmental transfer amount, and just to remind you, that is, the federal government helps us make up the difference in our cost versus what Medicaid has paid us. They give us approximately a 50%, 50% to 60% match on that, and the auditors came back and they looked and they said, oh, you're going to get a little bit more. So that was, that was a nice adjustment, so.
A little bit more being half a million?
Half a million. We'll get about 3.7 million, which is what we got last year, and we had estimated 3.2, so we will be budgeted positive on that line also. Jim, talk a little bit about the VA contract review. Right now, to answer your question, Commissioner Borgeson, we are about $270 a day on an average reimbursement for last month for VA. If we bump that up by the 15%, we get back that 15%, we'll be about $317 a day, so that would be over our cost. So, we would be able to cover that. And as Jim said, they were extremely complimentary. They did visit one of their beneficiaries in the facility also, and were, they couldn't, they were unbelievable, they, this patient has just blossomed, and they were, yeah, they were very, very excited, and they're very happy with the care that we give their beneficiaries, so.
Good.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Dee?
I sure agree with Commissioner Morgan in feeling good about how things are going out there. I mean, the numbers are good. You guys are doing something right. You know, we, I think we all realized with, when we did the HMA study and everything, that there was going to be no quick, immediate solutions to all of our problems. There's incremental improvements that we can be implementing on the way, and we're doing it, and I'm thrilled to see the results. I mean, it's exciting now to move forward, and now we'll see what short-term rehab can do to enhance the cash flow as well.
Right, we'll have that coming up, and then electronic health record also would be another boost to give us a little bit more help in the documentation, so we can, again, get some more of the reimbursement that's due to us for the care that we provide.
Well, for the first quarter report to come in, $869,000 positive to the budget, I commend you for the good work that's going on out there, you and everybody.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Any questions? I'm not sure if it's Trustee or Commissioner Boyle.
Commissioner, right.
Commissioner, Commissioner Boyle.
You can call me, no, that's.
Careful.
I want to add mine, that's right. Well, this is live, so I know he's. But focusing on you and your report and the operations on 42nd and Woolworth, this is a terrific thing, and it's really wonderful to see the response that you took to this study, and it was a, really a lot of turmoil that you went through and a lot of agony, but you've really come out and turned this into something very positive. It's a positive, great operation to begin with, but then what you've done, working on these finances and accepting and making these changes, is a big deal. So I really congratulate you, and you know, I've been a critic in the past, as you caught on once in a while.
No.
Maybe, maybe still am a little bit, but in any event, I wanted to really congratulate you and Mr. Truvil and the staff for what you've done. This is wonderful. Keep it up.
Thank you. We appreciate that, and our employees appreciate that, and they're very, very supportive of the missions.
Thanks. We know that. Thank you.
Thank you, DeeDee.
Thank you, DeeDee.
And that should conclude the finance committee report.
There's one other, the approval of a revised fixed asset account policy for county IT equipment. Do you want Joe to?
Excuse me, yes, yeah.
Joe?
Yeah, that's just a short revision. When the dot com interlocal was revised about a year ago, we, there was a change in the historical provision. The way the interlocal was originally written, it said that all IT assets should be transferred to dot com. But as dot com was going through their financial audit this year, some issues about how this was being accounted for from both the county side and the city side came up, so we had a meeting and we worked with the city and the dot com finance people, and so now we have a consistent policy where certain material fixed asset purchases that are used exclusively by the county offices and don't require any real dot com technical support, the assets will continue to remain on the county books. And this is just a small, select group of assets, and it would include some things like scanners and plotters used in GIS or the assessor's office, or some software developed specifically and purchased by the sheriff's office. So if these IT assets are really now only being used by the county and that's supported or really require any dot com involvement, they'll stay on the county's books, and that, and the city has a similar policy, and so the financial auditors from dot com are happy with this new policy, revised policy also.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote. We'll move to the administrative services. There's one item on that. Commissioner Tusha?
Thank you. This is approval of Amendment One to lease the treasurer's office at 411 North 84th Street, and if there's any questions, Jerry Leahy is here present, and I would move for approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Duda?
I mean, this is good news. We should be telling the world what we're doing on this.
Come on down.
Particularly when the owner of the building isn't here yet.
Morning, Jerry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jerry Leahy, Public Property. This is a result of a rent reduction that was discussed at the committee meeting a month or so ago, when we had the discussion on all the treasurer's branch offices, so this is the first of maybe three renegotiated leases that we can reduce the rent and the lease payments. This would result in about a $90,000 savings over the seven years that remain.
That's awesome.
A 10% reduction.
Pardon me?
A 10% reduction?
Yes, it's a 10%.
Very good, James.
That's what I have.
That's it.
Good job.
Great job, Jerry. Thank you.
Here and your keep.
I had one other thing. Congratulations to Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Rogers. Did you also get another award this morning?
You know, I did.
What's that? You did?
Well, I showed it to you.
Oh, that was.
We'll keep it private.
We want to have the same thing put up on all of our, all of our offices, too.
I don't, I didn't know that was an award.
What it was is, what it was, was when Jerry and Commissioner Morgan and another scoundrel toured the facility on Lake Street that we ended up, you know, it was vandalized and we moved the state offices. They toured it to kind of look to see what it was like on the inside, and it's kind of a, kind of left in a real state of disarray, and one of the things the state people left was a portrait of our governor. So, one of these smart alecks took it off the wall, put it in my office, so it's going to go home with me, and I'm going to put it someplace where Ann would be very surprised, probably in the bathroom. With all due respect, I shouldn't be that way.
No, we're just fun.
I'm just having fun.
We're just having fun, yes.
There he is. Commissioner?
Well, congratulations on that.
But I appreciated that. Yeah, thank you, it was special.
And again, great job, Jerry. Thank you.
Please vote.
Motion passes.
Next is the Community Service Committee, and there's one item on that. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. We, there we go. We have up for renewal the interlocal with the City of Omaha regarding the Visitor and Convention Bureau, and the city has given us a revised agreement. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the agreement? Dana, did you have anything you wanted to say? Paul, did you have?
Dana Markle, Director of the Convention and Visitor Bureau. I didn't come prepared with a comment, but I would like to say thank you to Douglas County. We've operated under an interlocal agreement, I believe, for 12 years, and throughout that time, you have provided the city the visitor promotion fund, and you've done so with full support, and I want you to know from the Convention Visitor Bureau, we very much appreciate that. As a member of city government, I have my colleagues here, Paul Kratz and Al Herring from Finance, Paul from Law, who are available to answer any questions. I will say, as a city employee, we have received additional funds from the city, and I believe it is, was in 2008, there was a stadium tax fund that was passed, and we have consistently received revenue from that stadium tax, which represents roughly $700,000 a year. We also, in the proposal before you, have a contribution from the city, and I just want to say, this is the first time that the city has ever provided a contribution to this extent, and I appreciate the city's efforts in doing so. It's the first time we've seen this. That concludes my comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions later.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. I'm going to pass this down, and I'd like, we should be enough copies for everybody and then to give one for the clerk. And I'll make the formal motion, but just to tell you, and I'll explain thoroughly why, my, this is, this basically to extend it as is for a maximum of two months to give some room here, and I'm going to explain some reasons for that and give a thorough background and try to clear up some things that are kind of out there. Now, one, I mean, the number one reason is, you know, we've been talking about this since about October, November, so it's hard for me to make a decision on this right today. So I think there needs to be some air in the room on this, because there's still some more dialogue I think that needs to happen. There's a part of me that, you know, okay, we've been having this dialogue for I don't know how long, and then the last board meeting gets plopped up, and wants to make a call on that. Now, let me, I guess, get back to some of the other reasons and try to lay out some historical markets here. Sometime probably about June or October of '12, you know, we had the contract up, and it's been getting extended from then. Contract was up because we had a great amount of the tourism industry. This wasn't just the convention center. It was hotels, it was rental people, it was everybody coming and saying that they wanted a more muscular, robust CVB, and that's when the board agreed to go into a dual role with the city to look at what that should be. And a lot of the dialogue at the time came around the point that the board has put in somewhere about $3 million, and at the time, the city hadn't matched that. Now, being on both ends of the stick, from the mayor's side, when it got put in in 2002, and watching it come to now, 2008, when the stadium tax come, came, there was an influx, and through the period of time, all of us being sensitive to the economic pieces knew that nothing new could go in, so we extended it. And in this discussion, over the last year or so, and all of this, when the agreement came into place, it's my thought that the agreement came into place, because at the time... because at the time, there was this big investment in the convention center. And over the last 10 years, we've grown to understand that the tourism industry is more than a big bill. It's leisure, it's arts, it's all of this. And so when we entered into this and started negotiating, there's a report on the web that says, you know, and the article probably came in June, but it's quoted July 2nd, that says, you know, over 2012, there's been like $1 billion worth of economic impact in tourism. $1 billion. Now, in most places, this is funded through hotel motel tax and restaurant taxes, which I know is a sensitive subject. Our half of the restaurant tax goes toward funding promotion pieces to the bureau. It's to the bureau because we owned it. We own it now. So I want to clarify in saying, when comments are made that this is a pass-through, not a pass-through, we own it and we come into agreement for somebody to run it and we give the money there to run the bureau. Now, to say to me that it's just a pass-through is like saying, I have a house. I pay for it. I pay for the people to run it. I pay for the gas and everything. And yearly, you might come and buy the food you need to eat it, but then I'm just a pass-through. We're equal partner in it. And so with that $1 point billion dollar influx, I think we are good partners in the fact that the only thing that we get benefited from it is the restaurant tax. No, excuse me. The hotel tax. In the agreement, there are about eight different venues that benefit. Restaurants, we don't get that revenue. Culture and arts, we don't get that revenue. Seats. Sporting facilities, we don't get any of that revenue. Gas station, we don't. Rental cars, we don't. Shopping retail, we don't. We get one and we put in most of the revenue. Now, the only thing I'm saying and I'm asking is a dialogue to make it competitive. And that's what I have the issue with in extending it today because there's been kind of one-way dialogue. So that's what, you know, I put this proposal out there for. And I want to hear what's said because I want to clarify, too, that there's this misunderstanding that, you know, the county has said that the city's misusing the money. No, that is not the case. What was just clarified and me as the rep on the board brought up was that the... say we give a $3 million contribution. My understanding is when it comes to the city's budget, if the city's budget for the tourism department is $2 million, they may get that $2 million and the other remaining is in a fund. A fund that they can access, but a fund that's there. And I brought that to the board's attention just by the fact that everybody thought it was getting fully distributed. So I want to make that clear. No one's saying the city is holding money and using it for some other purpose because it cannot be used for that purpose. So, you know, at the heart of it is that I understand there's more money in, but I just feel like there hasn't been the dialogue and there's some conversation I think needs to happen because if the economic benefit is $1 billion and we're not even, you know, it's just like us driving a car. It can go 120, we go at 40. And so we haven't even drove it to get the economic benefit that's there to the bigger county and the surrounding area because our economic benefits spills over into Iowa. It spills over into Sarpy. It spills over to a lot of other pieces. And so, you know, I think it's reasonable to have some more dialogue to see. And we're not even asking to lump it in over a one-year period. It's a five-year phased in. So I just lay that for the context of whatever discussion's going to happen or my ask to lay it over two months because, you know, I think there's more to it.
Pam?
Is that a motion, Commissioner Rogers?
It is.
Wasn't to lay it over, wasn't it to extend the contract?
Well, basically, right here, extend it two months to give some more room to talk.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Pam?
And thank you for this resolution, Chris. As I said, I'll second it. You know, we've extended this agreement several times in the past and we've had discussion back and forth. And I'd like to extend it again just for the two months to continue having discussion, especially because we just received Friday a new agreement, a proposed interlocal agreement. And I don't think we've had the chance to really look at it and, you know, discuss it and hash it out. So I'm willing to go with another two months. I don't want to keep on extending this month and month and then two months and three months. So I think, you know, at the end of February, I think that hopefully we can come to some type of agreement, whether we continue with this or whether the county chooses to take it back. We're not quite sure on that. But I will go along with the extension of two more months so we can get the final dialogue taken care of. Thank you.
Mike? I also, before we vote, would like to hear from Paul Kratz and Al Herring. Yes.
I'll be asking them.
But Mike, you were next.
Well, I'd like to defer to the city attorney.
I just, Paul Kratz, city attorney. Just want to apologize for the lateness of getting this to the board. I think that, well, I know there was miscommunication on the city's part as to who is to do what, who to draft what and when. So I apologize for that. The two months will help. Again, that's why we got something to you very lately. Our proposal is that the city for 2014 is going to put in $1.1 million. That's already in our budget. The year after that, we're going to add another $200,000, another $200,000 after that. So after the five-year period of time, we'll be putting in $2.1 million. It's not, you know, the 3.1 or 3 million that the county's putting in, but our effort is to try to get closer to that amount. We all recognize that we should be putting more into the CVB. It does a lot for this town and we want to continue to do that. But as you know, as with the county, we have a lot of pressures, financial pressures from a lot of different areas, so... But our effort, our desire is to put more into it and hopefully go to the CVB.
I wanted to make some comments. I agree with what Mr. Kraft has said. And I'm going to go way, way off the discussion, which is nothing new. I think this is a terrible distraction for us. Think about what our goals are, what our responsibility is to the community. It's to provide the safety net for people and housing and seeing they're fed, that they receive benefits through the social services office. We've got a wonderfully active and aggressive mental health unit. Mr. Shan did a great job. It's getting better under Sherry. It's just, it's really focusing. We shouldn't be distracted by a convention visitors bureau and argue with the city. I think it unnecessarily puts a strain between these two governments. And the idea that the county would take it back is hard to phantom. I mean, it's kind of like us taking over Riverfront Development or something. We don't have the personnel to do it. We don't have the history to do it when the city has been expert in what they've done and they've done a terrific job putting all that together. The same thing goes for this convention visitors bureau. And I think what we ought to do, excuse me, is is ask for amendments to the state law so that this money goes directly to the city for distribution as they see fit to the convention visitors bureau. We have a stake in it as residents of the county and in the city, but I just don't see this joint interlocal agreement doing what it should do because, first of all, the word agreement isn't even in the picture, apparently. I mean, we're talking about telling the city that they need to increase their funding. Well, who are we to tell them? They have control of their budget. They should be able to budget this office like any other office. It is, it's not a good idea for two governments to try to run the place. You know, that's the way the Health Department used to be. And Kathy Kelly, she choked me because when I was mayor, I gave the, got to cut a deal and gave the Health Department to Douglas County. And I believe in that. I mean, just like the parks that we gave to the city. It doesn't make a lot of sense for us to just have a little bit of something. That's what we have here. And I think the money would be much better spent. I think the time and talent of our director, I think, you know, it's a shame that the lawyer for the city has to come here with all the matters he's got and come down and talk to us about this. I think what we need to do, and I'd like to see a part of these further talk because I'm going to vote for it. I think Chris made an excellent suggestion, Commissioner. So I think that's the deal. We should extend this for a couple of months. But I'd like part of the discussion to be the county getting out of this and how can we do it in a clean way and let the money go directly to what the purpose is. I just don't see any point in this interlocal agreement. I think it's a bad idea gone totally amok.
Claire?
Thank you. Well, I agree with some of what you say, Commissioner Boyle, but I believe there's a certain checks and balance in place that isn't all bad. And I'm sorry if we have to drag Mr. Kratz down here once every five years.
It's nice to come down here, actually.
Kind of a scary thought. And frankly, I would be okay with moving forward with the five-year agreement that we have before us today. I don't see a need to extend this. I don't think that we need to try to twist the mayor's arm even harder to try to get her to commit to more money. I mean, as we see in the resolution, all they can commit to is presenting it to the city council. I mean, they can't control what the city council does. All they can do is commit to what they will present. I think the agreement looks good. I think it accomplishes what I would like to see in my long-term vision for the convention visitors bureau. Sure, I'd like to see more funding. I'd like to see more funding for everything, but there's a certain reality that that isn't going to happen. My question actually for you, Mr. Kratz, since you're a lawyer, the city's lawyer, how does this mesh with the city? Does the city council have on their... Do they meet today?
They meet today. This is not on their agenda simply because we kind of got into this very late.
So they can't approve this extension anyway?
It'll be in January sometime before it gets to...
So come January 1, we're without an agreement, no matter what?
We're without an agreement. A couple of things can happen. Obviously, there's still money. The city's putting money into the CVB, so there's money there to run it for a while. I'm assuming we'll come to an agreement at some point fairly quickly. It's not unusual, at least from the city's standpoint, to have this type of situation with other agreements and we just on good faith run things over for a few weeks or a few months until we get things resolved.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I would be comfortable moving forward with the five-year agreement. I don't have a hang-up with talking more, I guess, but I'm not sure what we hope to accomplish by that. I think those discussions have taken place. I think they've accomplished what I wanted. I'd be comfortable moving forward.
Is that a motion?
No, you already have a motion on the floor.
I know we do. Mine's yours better.
PJ? And then Chris? And then Patrick? And then Al?
Oh, perfect. Okay. I had the call from Marty Billick Friday evening after 5:00. He, you know, talked to me about this issue and I asked him about the city council and where they were. He didn't really have a sense of that. He said it was a good point. They're going to be talking. So we really don't know for sure what action they're going to take at this point. That'd be accurate, I think.
I think that's accurate, although I feel comfortable that they'll approve it.
Okay. And then, Chris, if I could ask you, what would be, you know, our hope to accomplish in the two months? In other words, let's say we're sitting here 60 days from now. What might be, you know, a positive thing that you'd like to hear at that point? Just so...
You know, I don't, you know, PJ, I don't know what we will hear. But the fact is that when we went out on the voyage for this thing, we said, we need to, you know, there needs to be some equal skin in the game. And so now, we do this delay, we do this delay. And let me, and now we come back and we just accept the first deal. We haven't even looked it over. There hasn't been any dialogue because once I get my say to speak, you know, I'll elaborate on it. But that's, that's one of the pieces. There does need to be some talk because traditionally, and I don't, I haven't really masterfully looked at the budget since 2004 for the city, but I am familiar with it just like you are and just like Mike is. That restaurant tax, for all the drama it caused, you know, it was a courageous move just for the stakes that they went in. But traditionally, that has been the backbone of founding, funding CVBs across the country. There is a good chunk of money. If you took, let's say, at least the number I thought I saw at one point, 30 million that you get from that. I mean, no, 300 million or so. You know, a certain percentage of that would knock this out the box. And I'm not saying the city doesn't have financial troubles. You can, everybody is. It's pressure.
We all do.
Yeah. But if one of the financial troubles is pension, pension problem's going to take 40 years to fill. So we, until the pension's fixed, are we going to say for 40 years? There's not another point there? And I'm just saying, have some dialogue with me of how you get there in five years, you know? And if it's a fact of binding future mayors or future people, we do that all the time with union contracts. When we set them out five years and terms of four years. I'm just, I'm just saying, you're putting this down. We're supposed to accept it and we've had no dialogue. You know, my interest from this is that the county doesn't do a lot with economic development. You know, it's just because of the city limits and everything like that. This is the element that we do deal with that is ours, economic development-wise. When we go through the funding process, we deal with that. So at the heart of it, you know, I think there's some more dialogue there to give. And quite honestly, I'm not carrying that water because I can honestly say I haven't talked to any of them. But, you know, I'm not going to die on this sword. For two months, after negotiation, talk, we don't get anything, I'll let it fly. But to the tourism industry that came down here, you know, this is your moment of truth. Because we heard you, we tried to negotiate on it and if you don't have anything to say, I'm not going to die on that sword.
Okay, I want to support the two months. Mr. Rogers, what you've suggested, made the motion for. And I think all of us ought to be involved in that dialogue in the next 60 days so that we're really have some input, see what we can do and work with the council also and, of course, the mayor's office. So that's fine with me.
Is there any other commissioner?
Can I?
Chris.
I just want to thank you, Commissioner Kraft. I just want to give all a little bit of Commissioner Boyle's thoughts in regards to saying that, you know, it's a disturbance. I mean, the statute was set up for us to run it and all over the country, counties our size run CVBs. So, you know, when you're saying it's a strain and we could take it back over, well, we did have it. And the kind of dialogue that needs to happen when we take it back over because there's things thrown out there. Well, you know, you take it back over, what are you going to do? You know, what you could do is you could regionalize it because in the discussion, Pot County gets all the, gets benefits
Pot County gets all the, gets benefits from the College World Series, they get benefits from the riverfront stuff. Sarpy County gets benefit. We get benefit from their people stay, they come over here. So there's a whole lot of discussion in regards to options that we have, you know. There really are employees, when you look at the agreement, we signed over the employees and everything, so it's not a thing about bringing it back in this issue. They're ours. And so the only point is there's a bigger discussion about the industry that needs to happen. It is an economic piece that is big, that can come, and so, you know, all of this is trying to bring revenue, it's a bigger piece there. And in respects to, you know, the city, you know, the county telling the city what to do, I respect those entities, and by no means am I trying to tell the mayor what to do. There was a conversation we had in the corner Saturday at Metro, and, you know, in discussion, she says something, "Are you asking me to raise taxes?" I'm standing here on the record, no, I am not. And that's not my job to do. And so I say that in all due respect to her, that I'm not trying to tell her or the city council what to do, but I do think there's a dialogue, because there is, you know, some economics that comes with this. And, you know, the comparison to the health department, this is a whole little cleaner deal. I mean, we technically have the health department now, but the city council says the ordinance that we enforce, that's a whole nother discussion. So it's not a clean thing to that. So I just want to say that and make it clear that, you know, I'm not going to jump on this table and scream and yell.
Oh, come on.
But I do, but I do think there's a dialogue that needs to happen with this, and us taking this number without some discussion and back and forth with not only the mayor but the council does a disjustice to the potential that the CVB has and that the tourism industry has in the county.
I know that the city is to operate tourism.
The charter says they got a director.
Right.
Okay, Patrick?
I was just going to say that staff in the county attorney's office appreciate the extension, the opportunity to review what is here. The county attorney's office has still some questions about the draft agreement before you, so it would not be ready to act on today.
And Mike, and then I'd like to call on Al Herrick.
I canceled my request.
Okay. Al Herrick, could you tell us, say what you're prepared to say?
Well, I don't have any prepared remarks. I was going to come down and answer your questions, but just a few things. The city has limited resources, just like you folks do. We're going to struggle to increase the funding for the CVB also. Last year, we passed a budget and we took $9 million of reserves to do that, and for the '14 budget, and '15 is going to be a struggle to do that also. And I think if you take a look at any other department that is going to get these types of increases for the next five years percentage-wise, would be thrilled to get them, based on just the resources that the city has. So that's kind of what I'm here to say. I think the worst thing we can do is to not go together and have a joint CVB like this or go our separate ways or anything like that. It'd be inefficient, that type of thing. So duplication of duties or efforts and that type of thing. So we got to, we got to keep this thing going together, and that's kind of all I have to say at this point. But I'd be glad to be in the discussions and help out with hammering out an agreement in the future.
I do have a question there. I would like to see you all's numbers since it's been in existence.
You know, I do have a schedule I could pass out for everybody.
Well, no, I'd like to know the particular, particular revenue of the restaurant tax.
Oh, we can provide whatever you'd like.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see.
Yeah, it's running about $25 million a year, and it's, yeah, I think we budgeted 27 million for 2014. And I understand that a lot of people have said that we can use that money for these type of purposes, but it goes into the general fund just like any other revenues, and it gets prioritized through the budget process, and that's how it works right now. So it's going to be a struggle to allocate those funds to anything else. A lot of the hotel and these tourist industries are pointing to the restaurant tax and saying, well, jeez, it's just a natural to use that money for these types of things. And obviously, tourism does add to that, but if you take a look at our restaurant tax, I think a majority of it is generated with just what's already happened in city already. You know, your Burger Kings, your Pizza Huts, your local bars, those types of things are unaffected by tourism generally, or a good portion of it is. And those revenues would come in generally 95% unaffected by tourism and conventions, I would think. So it, again, it's just something we used to balance the budget for the last few years, generally.
And Marty, did you have anything you wanted to add? No, I saw you walk in, so... Okay, any other commissioners? Yes, Chris?
No.
Oh, Pat?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. Mary?
I waited to speak on this because I actually was quite disturbed with my conversation that I had with Marty and the mayor. I have made it very clear from the beginning what my issues were with this, and that is the city putting in equal to what we have. And I keep bringing up the history because that's what the history is. The history is, we give it, we loan it to the city, and they put in exactly what the county's doing so that they could use the promotion. They would use those dollars to promote, we would use our dollars to operate. When I hear that my colleagues are running up there telling the mayor's office that my whole goal is to have this fail because I want to make the city look bad, I'm flabbergasted by that. I am absolutely flabbergasted. That is junior high crud. And again, I have made my points, and to be questioned about it even frustrates me even more, but I have been very clear on what my intentions are with this agreement. I don't operate trying to make people look bad. That's not my mode of operende, and I take great exception to those who ran up there and said so. But I will be supporting Commissioner Rogers.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Mike?
I would just like to add my final sense, too. If someone did that, that's totally inappropriate. Commissioner Borgerson doesn't operate that way. I know that firsthand, because we have great disagreements, but she never does that. Is this a distraction or not?
Call for the vote, then. Motion passes.
We'll move to the criminal justice committee. Commissioner Boyle, you have one item on the agenda.
Okay, my iPad's shut off, so let me tune in and see what it is. Let's see, it is criminal justice. Oh, yeah, okay, we got the United Way contract. Come on down. We've had some discussions, and I think the, what we're going to need to do, unfortunately, and you've got some things to pass out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, why don't you give them to Mr. Kavanaugh or his folks? And I think where we are is the questions that were asked by Commissioner Borgerson have already kind of hung in the air, and unless they can, I don't know if they can be answered today satisfactorily, but I think the move of the board, I would suspect, is that one more year of what we've done in the past, and then try to rationalize what the increase is all about. I believe that's where we are. But we need to see what you've got. And I think I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Borgerson to let her handle this with the...
Do you want to go ahead and present what your, what the handout is, and then we'll kind of go from there?
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
Agne Dizona, D-I-Z-O-N-A, United Way, 1805 Harding Street. So this is a little bit different from what we passed around last week. We heard your comments and your concerns, and I went back to United Way at the executive level and re-discussed the quarter-for-community service program and the importance of it. So what we would like to propose is that if the county agrees to provide a $15,000 fund in addition to our contract fee, that United Way of the Midlands will cover the increased expenses, increased program expenses, which includes supplies, postage, staff, and Kathy is not the only person, she's the program coordinator, but we also have administrative staff that designates time for scheduled appointments and helping out with paperwork, as well as volunteer insurance. So this is something a little bit less than what we were requesting last week. So our contribution, United Way's contribution to the program would be a little over $32,000. We are requesting the contract increase from $49,427 to $65,610, and that includes the 3% cost of living adjustment and the $15,000 fund that would be used to waive client fees. And we have had many discussions with probation officers and Commissioner Boyle and the advisory committee that that $40 fee could be or is a significant impact of some people not coming through the program or not completing the program. So we are expecting at least 20% increase in intakes and more people served, or hopefully more. And we can definitely revisit that subject to see what the outcomes of the programs are once we have that fund established.
What is United Way's contribution?
If the county agrees to provide $15,000 in fund, we will cover $32,321.
Okay, if we contribute 15, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we were also requesting 3% cost of living adjustment, which is about $1,500.
So the total amount you're asking us for to increase the contract by is $32,321?
We are requesting from $49,427 to $65,910.
Okay, that's for two years, right?
Yes. Well, annually for two years.
Annually, okay, I see.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the $15,000 for those, waiver of those funds is really a great investment for what it produces, the people that keeps out of the facility and the people that get the experience on the job and community services. I just see a terrific benefit from that. And I think United Way has taken some steps to come forward, as Commissioner Rogers talked about last week, wanting to see them have something more in the pot, so to speak. I think it's reasonable. I know that it is not budgeted. We've done that in the past, though. We've voted for things that are not budgeted. And we do have the funds and contracts to fund this. I think it's a reasonable request, unless someone thinks we ought to pare it down a little bit. Eventually, I'll make a motion that will ask for approval, but I'll let the discussion go first.
Commissioner Duda?
You second.
You seconded?
He said eventually he'll make the motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion if I got a second. I make the motion.
As soon as he hears the second, he'll make the motion.
You got it. Motion and second made. Okay, great. Thanks.
If I may. I think it's a great thing. I think United Way is a great partner. I think this is a bargain for Douglas County. If you weren't there doing this, there is no way that we could do this or anywhere near this price or be as effective in implementing it. I think this is a smarter way. The waiver fund is a real good idea. I mean, who are we punishing if somebody doesn't have the $40 and we say, okay, then you're going to go to jail? Boy, we'll show you.
Yeah.
You know, everybody loses with that. I appreciate the willingness of United Way to step up to the plate on this, to make this a reality, and I'm enthused about moving forward with it. I think it's a great, great partnership.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Well, but I just want to note for the record that, you know, this passes, I won't run in probation to have some talk, too, about putting some skin in the game. You all stepped up and everybody, and I think, I think they need to talk about, they got some benefit to it, particularly what the state's going to be doing with trying to talk about the system and trying to keep people out. You know, I think there's some room for them to have something in it. So, and I'd just like to, over the next couple of years, engage them with that.
Commissioner Kratz?
And I'm going to pull Mike Boyle and diverge completely. Agna, is that the correct way to say your name? Is a product, I guess you could say, of Omaha's sister city's relationship. And her father is a country singer in Lithuania. She's from Vilnius, which is Omaha's sister city. And it's because of this relationship that she came to Omaha to go to Creighton, and is now with United Way. And so this is how this handshake-to-handshake diplomacy works, and it's a great example right here. So thank you, and I, too, will support this.
Thank you. You're making me blush. Thank you. It was a long way here.
No other lights? There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you very much.
Very happy about this. Borgerson?
Yes? I just have a question for clarification.
Yes.
So the motion was, that was passed, was to approve the agreement that's attached as amended with the amount that was presented today, because the amount that was in the agreement was for $90,000.
Yes, sorry, I should have clarified that. The amount, so that we do clarify.
Is it 65.510 or 65.610? Because that letter says both.
It's 65...
610.
Well, it says, then it says 65.510.
There's a typo there, we just need to know which one it is.
Which one?
The contract that we have prepared for last meeting shouldn't be considered, that was for $90,000. So we will redo the contract. It was for 65.610.
610.
So what we, since the, basically what you did today was then you approved the agreement as amended.
Right.
So what we can simply do then, since that's been approved, is draft up the revised agreement and for the chair to sign, because the agreement's been approved, the only change is that dollar amount.
Yes.
Right. So we wouldn't have to resubmit the agreement again. We could just simply have the chair sign it as amended with the correct number.
Good. For, and again, just so we're clear, but the agreement should say 65.610 annually for two years, and then of that 65.610, $15,000 is to be used for the waiver fund to waive the program fees. And a 3% cost of living adjustment.
Okay, so I can read body language from the clerk, which tells me, and I agree, with the permission of the board, I would like to present at the January 7 meeting a revised agreement with the correct language for approval.
That would probably be best. Yep. That would be cleanest. Now, are we going to run into any payments between now and then not being processed because of this?
I checked into our finance, and we have been billing counted twice a year.
So we're okay?
The last payment was in April, so I assume there will be another payment for the other half of 2013.
But that's for the existing agreement that hasn't expired. Okay, so we're okay.
And if we track that history, it would be probably sometime in April that we would submit the...
Another request for dollars. Okay, so we're okay. So Patrick, on the 7th, then, have that contract on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I want to take a moment to congratulate you. You really did your homework, and, you know, I sent a note up to you that said, "We're not going to make it." So it's really great to see you pull this, pull this out of the fire, because it is a very important program. I congratulate the two of you and whoever else got involved to make this thing happen. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm really excited for you. This is going to be great. Thanks.
We're excited to.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Next is the human resources, and the first item is the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, if there's no questions or comments on that. Next is the weekly CAO report on staff assaults.
There was just one altercation that corrections resulted in a minor injury to a correctional officer. That's it.
And then legislative issues. There was one that many of you were briefed this morning, and this isn't a new issue. It's kind of, it was a holdover from a couple of years past that we were briefed on, but Senator Schumacher will be introducing in the banking committee the bill to allow credit unions to be able to accept public funds. And so we heard today from the lobbyists for those credit unions and asking us for our support on that legislation, and then for us to send a resolution and a letter forward with that. And so, again, we were all briefed. I think we all feel comfortable with moving forward with our support of it, and so I told them I would bring it up during our legislative discussions here today, and would ask for a motion to approve...
So move.
That move. Any further discussion on that legislative item? Commissioner Boyle?
On that item, I would like us to really do a strong letter, make it very clear that we're really behind. This is a great proposal, I think.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Please vote. I don't have any other legislative items at this point as anyone else. The last item under this committee is a resolution approving the revised salary for the Douglas County Sheriff for 2015-18. Do you want Lee to come down?
I do, and Mark. I asked them to go to Lincoln and send it up so they could be experts, so come on down and... You're not an expert unless you're 50 miles from home. That's the way the deal is. So I suppose you have to pay a mile each. So I suppose you have to pay a mile each.
And that just went up, by the way.
Mayor, Mr. County Board, Lee Lejeune, Director of Human Resources and Civil Service.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone, and Mark Williams, our compensation analyst. We were asked by Commissioner Boyle to relook at the proposed resolution for the position of the Douglas County Sheriff. Since the initial resolution or resolution came out and information was gathered, some new things have come out. The Sarpy County announced what they were paying their elected officials, sheriff's office in particular. And also, the county board here, you all approved a salary for the combined office of registered deeds and the assessor. And based upon that, Commissioner Boyle's request was us to relook at that. There was initially a resolution on December 3, and that was updated December 10, which is pending, and then it was asked to be carried over till today. And Commissioner Boyle asked us to relook at the numbers. So basically, this morning, we wanted to present some new numbers that would reflect a higher salary for the position of Douglas County Sheriff. And as we looked at this, we looked at Sarpy County salary data, we looked at NACO information, the study that was done by the sheriff's office, the salary set for other Douglas County officials. And so we basically looked at this from the objective of what's the external market being paid for this position, what's the internal equity with the chief deputy, which is at 117, and the sheriff's captains, and then our other elected officials. So Mark's going to walk through that, and then we'll discuss, and we'll discuss the rationale for an increase in the proposal to what the sheriff should be paid in respect to county government and our other elected officials. So Mark, if you want to put that up?
Mark Williams, Director of Human Resources, I'm HR analyst, and...
Good morning.
Good morning. I know I'm supposed to give my address, I'd say, some days it seems like it's 1819 Farner. Now, the proposal that was passed on December 3 is at the top of the screen there. For 2015, it was 5%, 2016, 2%, 2017, 2%, and 2018, 2%. And you can see the dollar values that are associated with that. Now, in the interim, Sarpy County passed their structure, and they did something slightly different than what we're used to seeing. They set up a structure so there was like a floor to what the salaries would go up, and a ceiling. And then for each year, what point within that structure they use is dependent on the CPI that comes out in June. So they, for a starting point, they set their sheriff's salary at 125,000, which was a 7.77% increase over where the individual is now. So that was their starting point. Now, I've done some calculations of what the minimum growth would be at a 1% growth rate. It would get to 128, assuming that we have no inflation, essentially, and minimum increases are the result. If we would happen to have a higher rate of growth or inflation, one or the other, then it would grow as high as 38,590. I think Commissioner Boyle was a little concerned about us maintaining a competitive posture or, you know, an equitable posture in relation to an entity that's so close to Douglas County and that we interact with so much. So he asked us to take a look at this. And so what we did was run some options. He had proposed a 644 and 4, and I think that's what the resolution is before you. We also looked at other options. In option A, we went for a more aggressive initial increase, and we have some rationales for that, and then some level increases after that. We also provided an option B that was a little more, you know, less, a little less upfront with, then a three and a half increase after that. Now, here's some of the rationales. What we recommended, to jump ahead a little bit, is the option A, at 7%, 3, 3, and 3. And these are the rationales that we, that we had for that structure. That for the 2015 salary, it moves it above the chief deputy, which is for 2014, it's at 117, 239. And then at the 2015 salary, also then moves it above assessor, registered deeds.
Mark, would you stop for a minute?
Sure.
And show us what your option A says on that. Just pull your paper down. And option A, okay. Okay, all right, thank you. We were just off a year.
Okay.
So this is 2014, and that's 2015. Got it, we were off a year. Thank you.
Yeah, it's easy to, when we're talking a whole year ahead, to keep those in line.
Right, yeah, but okay, we're good now, thank you.
Okay, so back to the thought process that went into this. We wanted to be able to set it up so that the sheriff was, from the outset of this process, at least slightly higher than the assessor's office. And then the salary would move forward and catch up by the end of this process with the county engineer, so that it then ends up higher than the engineer by 2018. It would move the salary structure to, internally, to the fourth highest among the top offices in the county, that's excluding the medical doctors. And the structure would bring the sheriff's salary to a competitive status vis a vis Sarpy County more quickly. It would be, it'd be pretty competitive, or about the same in 2016, and it should be higher, depending on what that rate of increase is, by 2017. Okay, so there was a lot of overeducated thought, if you will, that went into it, and between Lee and myself and Tim. And I think the result is a proposal that we think makes a lot of sense in terms of the internal equity factors, how it fits in relation to other offices, the external factors, how it compares to the most immediate comparison, Sarpy County, as well as how it compares to other data from NACO. And now, just for a sense of where those options would put the position in comparison to other offices. Okay, option A down here is what we're talking about. And the initial rate then takes it above what the chief deputy would be, and also takes it above the assessor. And it's still, at this point, underneath where the engineer is, but it, over the period of the time period that we're setting the salaries for, ultimately, it does bring it slightly higher than the engineer. Okay, any questions?
Commissioner Boyle?
Don't have a question. You've certainly brought all those factors together in a real rational piece, so I want to thank you for, we're very fortunate to have you doing this work, so I think it's right on point.
Thank you, and you're welcome.
And you have a recommendation? Option A?
Yes, the recommendation would be to provide 7%, 3%, 3%, 3% for salary rates of 122, 714 in 2015, 126, 395 in 2016, 131, 87 in 2017, and 134, 093 in 2018.
I think this is appropriate for the office of the sheriff of Douglas County, so I'll make a motion that we adopt option A.
Commissioner Kraft?
And this will not surprise any of my fellow commissioners, but why do we think so linearly? Why is it 6444? Why not 6432 or 6433? Why do we always put ourselves in a box and think like that? Because I think if you were to have had that 6433, it would come out very close to the comparables you're looking for and not above them. And just, you know, my pointed commentary. And I know some people are chuckling under their breath about that.
Everybody is.
We could run those figures if that would be of value to you.
I'm probably the only one who would make Kathy.
Okay.
No, because if you do that, I would ask that they all be brought back, and we have a special meeting to redo this. Because you're actually right on what should have happened when we did these in the beginning. We really did a total disservice of how we set these salaries a couple weeks ago. And so, starting with this one, to get us to have the discussion that needs to be had, this, the salary setting process will actually be a huge conversation when we get to our planning session that we're going to have during, not only for strategic purposes but budgeting purposes, and so you all will be a part of that as well. But this begins that process, and while I'm not really in favor of the increase that we have here, because of what we did with setting an administrative office at 120,000, I think we have no choice, but, and this office is a 24/7, quadrupled the number of employees, I could go on and on, in terms of responsibilities and duties, that I would be supportive of moving this in line so that it gets us started in that conversation. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments, please?
Commissioner Duda brought up a good point.
Commissioner, the resolution is wrong. Commissioner Duda?
I believe that first, we're going to have to have a motion to reconsider, since we've already approved a budget.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
We can't just approve two different budgets.
And if I could, the resolution that is before you has none of these figures in there.
Right.
So whatever motion needs to, is made, needs to reflect that.
That is correct. So first, do we have a motion to reconsider the sheriff's salary? Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner, you're done, Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Patrick?
Sorry, the motion needs to be made by someone that was on the prevailing side of the last vote, so...
PJ made the motion.
Oh, okay, I thought it was mine, sorry.
No, no, PJ made it, my second.
Never mind.
This is a vote to reconsider, please vote to reconsider. So next, the resolution that we will be talking about would be on the whereas, we're fixing the annual salary for the Douglas County Sheriff as follows. So for 2015, it would be 122714. For 2016, it would be 126395. For 2017, it would be 130187. And for 2018, it would be 134093. And the rest of those whereses, we could, I guess we're setting them by the percentages, so just cross out the rest of those whereses and use those, and put in the percentage so, as well, so we have it in the resolution. So 2015, after the number put 7%, and then 3% for 16, 17, and 18. Okay. All right, is there, was there a motion?
That was, that was my motion.
Okay, is there a second to approve?
Second.
With that, we have no need for executive session. I would like to announce that our first, we have Child and Youth on Tuesday, December 17, today at 1:00, in room 903. Please note that this is our last scheduled board meeting for the year, and that we will resume on January 7, 2014. On behalf of the board, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy And with that, oh, oh, and, I'm sorry. You go ahead and...
Well, a good friend of mine and a former director, excuse me, of the Douglas County Housing Authority, Mike Farhart, his funeral took place today at 10:00 at Holy Cross. Mike was a really excellent director for us at the housing authority for many, many years, and I'd just like to recognize and ask us to take a moment of silence to respect his memory and the contributions he made to Douglas County government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second? Should I vote?